Welcome all of my fellow Board members and call the July 25th, 2019 School Board Meeting and Tentative Budget Hearing to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Ms. Belford?
Present.
Ms. Campbell?
Present.
Ms. Duskevich?
Present.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
And Ms. Susan?
Present.
Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. McDougal, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Ms. Duskevich. I wanted to just reach out and say welcome to all my new principals at the schools. I have five new principals, so I had the chance to meet them all, and I'm very excited. I think it's going to be a great school year. I also want to congratulate the staff and the community at Gulf U and Endeavor for increasing their grade. It was wonderful to get the grades, and congratulations to the teachers, to the community, to the principal, and to the students who improved their grade. So that was really nice to be able to celebrate that. I also was lucky enough to go to the astronaut parade in Cocoa Beach and celebrate our lunar landing and our astronauts, and some of our past astronauts were riding in the parade, which was kind of fun. I attended last weekend Stuff the Backpacks, which we will be giving out backpacks this Saturday, and I think we're going to have a great turnout. So that was kind of fun to stuff the backpacks, even though there was no air conditioning in the gym, and many of us looked like we were going to pass out from heat stroke. I also attended the Superintendent Summit, which I thought was very well put together. I'm looking for our theme, and I appreciate it, the impact that we all make in one way or another with our students. And I was also lucky enough to attend Food Services and their kickoff. And make a smile, help me out with that one, Dr. Mullins. What was the?
Serving up happiness.
Thank you, serving up happiness. And what an amazing group of people, the energy there was fantastic. These are people who get up at the crack of dawn to provide nutritious meals for our children so they can be able to reach their academic potential. So I want to thank the Food Service, and of course, I will not forget my Cocoa High School. There's a really great flyer now, the Cocoa High, to help fund the trip to Carnegie Hall. So I'm really hoping the event is at the Cocoa Playhouse on August 10th. The tickets are $25. You can buy them online. This will allow our chorus to go to Carnegie Hall. They're one of the few, I think they're the only high school that got selected to perform there in October. So if you can't go to hear them sing, please feel free to donate to the Cocoa High and specifically sign your check for the choir to go to Carnegie Hall. And that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal, Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Ms. Duskevich. Just a few things. I was gone for part of the time since our last Board meeting, but wanted to share especially with the Board and say a thank you to Palm Point Behavioral in Titusville. They invited me out this week to tour the facility, meet with their new CEO, which was wonderful. More importantly, thank them for all of the outreach work that they're doing in our schools, providing wonderful support to many of our principals and faculty and staff and students on the north end of the community. I look forward to our continued partnership there, and they are very eager to make sure that they're doing all that they can to support Brevard Public Schools from the mental health standpoint. So very appreciative of them. Also, I have to give a shout out to our head custodian at Titusville High School, Teri Haworth. She decided that the grounds at Titusville High School, ironic that we just had our Capitol Workshop today and talked about all the things that we can't fund, right? And one of those many things that we don't fund as a district is beautification on our campuses, planting and mulch and that sort of thing. And so she decided that she wanted Titusville High School to be a much nicer environment for her and her students and the parents in the community. She put out an all-call on Facebook for people to donate shrubs and mulch that could be used to beautify the campus. Had a wonderful response from the community, wonderful response of donations, as well as volunteers to come out, and they worked last Saturday beautifying parts of the campus. They'll keep working on it. But a huge thank you to her for her initiative to put that all together, and obviously to the community that supported those efforts to really make a difference at that school. Also, I'd like to say thank you to L3 Communications. I'm not sure how many of the Board members are familiar, but they reached out to Dr. Sullivan pretty late in the school year and said that they would like to, actually I think it's L3 Harris now, right? Did I say that correctly? Used to be L3 Communications. But they reached out to Dr. Sullivan and said that they would like to sponsor via scholarship some of our students here in Brevard County to participate in the National Flight Academy STEM Summer Camp Program in Pensacola this summer. And so our students will be leaving 12:30 this Saturday night. They are boarding a bus to head to Pensacola. We've got about 50 students that have been funded fully via scholarship to go up to Pensacola and participate in this phenomenal summer STEM program. So many thanks to L3 for their support of so many things in our schools, but especially for providing the opportunity for our students. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to our EIC team. Couple of our EIC members went out to Madison Middle School, and we have launched the Steam Academy, the Innovate Steam Academy at Madison. And for any of you who joined us in the Capitol Workshop earlier today, you heard that there's just so much that we cannot fund. And one of those things is computers and tables and desks and those sorts of things for special programs in classrooms. So they are working on, two of our Equity Innovation and Choice members went out and through a partnership with one of our business partners have gotten materials to refinish about 12 tables that are probably older than many of us in this room today. And the initial table that they refinished came out absolutely beautiful. So they are in the process of aligning volunteers to go out and continue the work on that this Saturday, and they will be meeting at Madison from, I think, 9 to 12 or 9 to 1 to continue refinishing tables so that the Innovate Steam Academy can have some nice tables for their students to work on. So thank you to our EIC team who brought that about, to our business partner that also made it happen, and then of course to all of the volunteers that will be working this weekend. And the final thing that I will say is, I don't know if you all have noticed it, I know our Brevard Schools Foundation has their school supply giveaway this weekend. I know we had the big Centerpoint Community Church giveaway last weekend, but there just really seems to be an enormous amount of school supply giveaways going on this year. And not only school supply giveaways to benefit our students, but also lots of programs to benefit our teachers to welcome them back to school. I've seen free meals that are being offered in, I think, Cocoa Beach this week. I've seen drawings for massages for our teachers. And so to all of those in the community that are realizing what an important time of year this is and how we really want everyone to start off on a positive note, we appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Susan?
First off, I wanted to say thank you to Mark Langdorff for his works on our CYAC Committee. We had a meeting earlier today, and due to the savings both from our identified MRI and outpatient surgeries and some of our rebates, we're looking at possibly going forward $1.86 million additional each year over the next three years in savings towards our fund balance over there, along with also receiving $2.3 million last year and a considerable fee-free couple of months where they didn't charge us for some of our stuff. And basically, instead of a $77 million trust fund or cost, we're looking at between 70 and 72 million. So that's a significant amount. And I would tell you that Mark will agree that our CYAC Committee is probably the most aggressive, knowledgeable Board in the state of Florida, and he said that there's many other school districts that don't even have CYACs. So to say the least, that he works with our leaders in the industry to get those savings, that's money that goes back into our teachers and our staff, and we don't have to raise rates, and that's amazing. So I'd wanted to give him a shout out for all his hard work that he normally does and the CYAC Committee that we normally have. I did want to say it was great. Superintendent Summit, amazing. You had some great speakers. I played football at Palm Beach Lakes, and I remember those days. It was a tough school, and to have a principal come in and take the reins like he did and show us what he's doing down there. And I'll tell you a funny thing, a lot of the stuff that he's doing, we're doing in our schools too. So I was really happy about that. I did want to say thank you to Sue Han for the facilities tour that we did, or to Sue Han, I keep doing it, I'm sorry, Sue. You know, we went to O'Gally and amazing things, new cafeteria, and if you look at some of the old panels back in the corner, there's literally wires hanging out, they're replacing the panels and doing stuff. But then I got to go over to Johnson, and Ms. Middleton is on a desk in this little classroom in the back, and she has a couple of blowers in her room, and she's working through the summer. And I did want to just say, our facility teams along with our construction teams are absolutely amazing, the amount of work that they do in the short amount of time. And I don't know if sometimes the inconveniences that we see both during and when we get back from the summer, that's appreciated how much it takes just to get to that point. I almost wanted to have some how our teachers actually meet some of the guys that put together the construction project, because these guys are committed, and they're doing an amazing job over the summer, and I want to say thank you, Sue, for everything that you did over there. I did want to say thank you to the Home Builders and Contractors Association. They had a lot of their kids doing their safety tests and stuff like that, and I went by, and we went ahead and had a meeting with a lot of the kids that were doing the testing, and then Space Coast Daily covered it, and they were doing some great things. But I will tell you that the Palm Bay Air and Heat has hired like six of our kids. And then the funniest story is I was listening to the pest control kids talk, and they were telling us about some of the things that they've had to remove out of some of the schools for their internships, which is pretty funny, not in their schools, in their houses that they have to go on their internships. And then one of the things that spun out of this, which I wanted to give a big shout out to a guy named Adam Broadway. Adam Broadway owns certified construction down there in Melbourne, and if anything knows, he came out, doesn't have a college degree, and he's been a big advocate for our construction programs. He's going to sponsor Melbourne High School, and he's going to come in with his trade, with the trades that work under him as a GC, and they're going to work hand in hand, and he's already offered to donate $4,000 to kick the year off for supplies for the construction program, and he's doing some amazing things. So that, just like you were talking about the mulch and everything, dedication to our trades programs is Adam, and I just want to say that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell?
Well, I made a big mistake last Board meeting and forgot something super important that I had gotten to do and want to recognize our students, and that is the Summer Music Theater Workshop, the culmination of the Summer Music Theater Workshop with Fiddler on the Roof and Mary Poppins. They were fantastic. Our students are so incredibly talented, and the musicals were wonderful. We had Bert from Mary Poppins Dancing on the Ceiling, and Mary Poppins Flying In, and Fiddler on the Roof. I mean, even in each show that I went to, something happened that wasn't like supposed to happen, and the students just stayed in character and played it off, and the audience loved it. So both shows were amazing, and I was sure I got to see Fiddler. And so our students are so talented, but I especially want to thank Cindy Johnson and her team of teachers who directed the show and engaged our students, and those performances, they were wonderful. I got to go to my first Palm Bay Youth Advisory Board meeting a few weeks ago, and just the students that are on that advisory board are very committed, they're insightful, they've got a lot to contribute to the city of Palm Bay, but they're our students from Palm Bay High School, from Bayside, from Heritage, and from Odyssey Charter, and so it's exciting for them to have that opportunity to impact their community. And I'm going to be talking to Dr. Sullivan because they have a couple ideas, they really want to engage with the district as well. West Melbourne School for Science, last Saturday had, excuse me, two Saturdays ago, had beautification day, and our new principal, Ms. Benson, asked the students and the parents to come in and do a similar project to what's going on at Titusville, and she provided the plants and the mulch, and we provided the sweat, and there was plenty of dirt to go around. But just want to thank those students and parents who came around, who came out, and then Ms. Benson and our clerk and the custodian served us lunch and did a great job coordinating us all. Central Middle Schools also, because it's this time of year, we're getting ready, they're also getting ready for, I won't say beautification, it depends on which college team you like. They're going to be decorating the halls next week with their National Junior Honor Society, asking students to come in and decorate the halls with different college themes, and so I'm sure there are some that all of you will like who have, yes, there you go. But Lindsay Kerstader, the sponsor for NJHS is going to be leading the students, so it's just great to see our students and our community stepping in. And I want to thank Jim Hudson and Dave Martin from Facilities for taking me on some construction project tours at Bayside University Park and West Melbourne School for Science. They're really doing, I will reiterate what you said, they're doing a great job in a short amount of time, and those facilities have got to be ready when the students get there, and they're going to be, so that's going to be great. Won't steal all the thunder, but I am super proud of my District 5 schools when we got our district and school grades in a couple weeks ago. School grades aren't everything, but it just shows the great work that our students and our teachers and the rest of our staff are doing, and I'm super proud of District 5. Everybody either maintained their grade or moved up one, or in case of Columbia Elementary, two grades, so excited to see those results.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Duskevich. Want to start by sharing, I had the real privilege of joining Shannon Krailing and her husband, Mark. Shannon was our 2019 Teacher of the Year, and the Commissioner of Education hosted the Teacher of the Year Annual Gala in Orlando, and I was able to join Shannon and her husband for just a wonderful celebration of an evening, just celebrating amazing educators, and Ms. Krailing certainly top of the list. So represented Brevard so well. So congratulations to Ms. Krailing again. I was able to participate in the back-to-school event at Centerpoint Church this past weekend, passed out nearly 2,500 backpacks, I believe, an amazing collection of volunteers, over 600 volunteers to make that happen, and want to do a big thank you to Lori Wiley, behind the scenes, I believe it's Wiley, behind the scenes coordinating everything, and it was just really exciting to see our students across the community get excited about coming back to school. Shout out to Senior Pastor Tom Walker as well. August 3rd, Love Brevard, another community agency has adopted Turner Elementary School, and volunteers will be collecting and be doing beautification on Turner's campus in preparation for the school and doing some wonderful things for our teachers there as well, so I'm looking forward to being a part of that community event as well. And I have to join the shout-outs and echo the amazing accomplishments of our school teams across our district. Student achievement and performance was just amazing. The focused work, the attention of our teachers and staff across our schools, absolutely amazing. For the first time since 2010, Brevard has no D or F schools. Yeah. I have to do a shout out for Cocoa High School, had, I believe, the highest secondary school point increase, and they are knocking on the door of a B school, so great work by our team there. And just a true demonstration of focused work and really keeping the sights set on our students and helping them achieve. We, for the third year in a row, achieved an A district, was just another amazing accomplishment. I would be remiss, alongside our teachers and our assistants and our school staff, is the tremendous support that our teams across the district commit to, to support our schools from our cafeteria workers and our maintenance techs and our HVAC techs and health and safety and our social workers and school psychologists. And I get in trouble when I start to list because I will leave someone off, but the reality is, is it takes a team across the district to serve the students in the way that we did, and just couldn't be more proud to serve the Brevard Public Schools as superintendent. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I'm going to reiterate and add to what some of my fellow Board members shared. I want to start with the Facility Services Team. In my district alone, the half-cent sales tax is being used this summer, just the schools that I'm aware of. At Stone Magnet Middle School, they're getting sewer lines put in. None of this stuff is very attractive, and none of it, I don't even want to, like, none of it sells on the surface, but it's important to know where your sales tax money is going, and it's important for those in the community of these schools to know that these things and recognize they've been done to your school while you've been off for the summer. So sewer lines and covered walkways at Stone, cooling tower and new chiller at Holland, let's see, duct work and electrical work in the cafeteria at Surfside, air handling units at Port Malabar. Other work has been done at West Shore, and Indy Atlantic is all tore up right now with all kinds of stuff going on there. So your half-cent sales tax works really hard for us in the summer when the students are away so that we can get the work done. And so thank you to Sue's team, who, I wish I could call them out by name, there's just so many of them that are just plugging away and working diligently trying to get the schools ready for the new year, so please tell them we are extremely grateful. Dr. Mullins mentioned Centerpoint Church and all that they did to put that backpack giveaway together. He mentioned backpacks and school supplies, but the other volunteers there, 50 hairstylists were there giving these children haircuts, and at one moment, we were standing together and we looked over and there was a, I mean, a wee little one, was he kindergarten, first grade, who just got his haircut, and they said these are the only haircuts some of those kids will get all year. And he saw a mirror in the corner, and he was admiring his new cut, and it was, both of us were like, oh, I mean, he was looking back and looking forward, and that was because hairstylists who don't probably make too much money in their own living were giving up their whole day to go in and cut hair for free for these children. And so I just want to say how much we appreciate them. There were dental hygienists there checking teeth, there were chiropractors there checking for scoliosis, and all these people were giving of their time, so we're so grateful to the community. And last but not least, I have to mention my District 3 schools as far as school grades go, because like Ms. Campbell's district, every single one of the schools in District 3 either maintained their grade or went up a grade level. Out of my 14 schools, we had nine As, two Bs, and three Cs, so you better believe we're going to be, for those three Cs, right, we're going to have an all A and B district and D3. But I want to give it a huge shout out to Stone Magnet Middle School that went up 32 points, to their administrators, to their teachers that have worked so hard, and like Dr. Mullins, it takes everyone in that school to bring the school together, to set the environment so that the students can learn, and so I'm just grateful to all of them. And I think that concludes our recognition portion of the meeting, and we're now going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskevich and members of the Board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, eight consent items, eight action items, which include the Tentative Budget Hearing, and one information item. You also have the Yellow Supplemental Agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Thursday, July 18th, 2019. Items A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F9 on meeting minutes, F12 on 2019-20 school resource officers, and H25 on the Brevard Public Schools Mental Health Plan received revisions. An attachment was added to G21 on adopt the 2019-20 Tentative Budget.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. McDougal. Please vote. Any discussion? Sorry. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
There are seven persons on this item agenda for the Board to consider.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
At this time, we want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Jana Jenkins on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Director of Student Services and Fiddlers to the position of Director of Student Services. Congratulations, Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Dr. Mullins, members of the Board, thank you for this appointment and this opportunity. I'm honored. Thank you. To Chris Moore, thank you for having faith in me. I can't wait. to roll up my sleeves and work with you. Roll them up. They're already rolled. Dr. Thady, Jane Klein, and Dr. Sullivan, your support means a great deal to me. Thank you so much. And to my new team, Dr. Fontan, you don't know what you're in for. So I thank you in advance for all your help and encouragement and mentoring. And my Fiddlers team, the deep friendships and collegial relationship will continue to move forward. And my new Student Services team, I look forward to working with you all. And finally, to my family who are watching online from Tampa and Colorado, your love and support and constant encouragement mean a great deal to me. So thank you, everybody. I look forward to it.
Okay, being there's no resolutions or proclamations tonight, we will move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. The School Board Policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment. The policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by vote of the board. We have nine speakers tonight. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, and the, and identify the topic you will be discussing. Our first speaker is Anthony Calucci, followed by Bill Juergens, and then followed by Justin Henry. Mr. Calucci.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. First off, I want to say, start by saying that last year I requested a workshop with the board chair about millage, and that request was never granted, even though it is guaranteed in the contract. Tonight, so there is no question about it, I'm publicly requesting a union board workshop. The topic of the workshop I'm requesting is secondary schools switching to a six-period day instead of a seven-period day. This was a popular idea a couple of years ago, when the former superintendent asked teachers to brainstorm ideas on how to increase planning time. But rather than vet the idea, a few individuals were allowed to crush the idea. Some of the benefits of returning to a six-day period seem obvious. It would lead to more planning time. It could decrease the number of instructional vacancies. By the way, stands at over 80 with one week left until school starts, and it could potentially save the district tens of millions of dollars. The pros and cons of a six-period day need to be thoroughly researched and then presented to the stakeholders to decide if they want to go in that direction. If the board chair denies my request for the workshop, I will take formal action. As we are heading towards our contract vote, I want to remind you that our teachers and community saw you vote against a third-party ruling that said you had the money to pay for the union's proposal. Our teachers deserved the pay, and it was in the best interest of students to do so. But four of you decided, and many teachers believe, conspired to vote against the recommendation, even when no significant evidence existed to refute our facts. This was clearly a result of a psychological phenomenon called group think. To quote from Psychology Today, "Group think occurs when a group of well-intentioned people make irrational or non-optimal decisions that are spurred by the urge to conform or the discouragement of dissent." This problematic or premature consensus may be fueled by a particular agenda, or simply because group members value harmony and coherence above rational thinking. In a group think situation, group members refrain from expressing doubts and judgments or disagreeing with the consensus. There are eight different symptoms that indicate group think. Illusions of invulnerability leads members of the group to be overly optimistic. Unquestioned beliefs lead members to ignore possible moral problems and ignore the consequences of individual and group actions. Rationalizing prevents members from reconsidering their beliefs and causes them to ignore warning signs. Stereotyping leads members of the in-group to ignore or even demonize out-group members who may oppose or challenge the group's ideas. Goes on, self-censorship, mind guards, illusions of unanimity, and direct pressure to conform. This board's group think is doing tremendous damage to this school district, and it must stop. Listen to the words of Einstein, who said, "When we all think alike, no one thinks very much." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Mr. Juergens?
Good evening. My name is Bill Juergens. I'm the Director of Athletics at Florida Tech. And before I go talk about a proposal, I would like to say that I'm a product of Brevard County Schools. I started Brevard County Schools in the third grade, graduated from Melbourne High School. I taught at O'Gallie Junior High 50 years ago, and my son has been teaching in your school system for the last 25 years. So I'm real proud of the work that Brevard County Schools do. I'm here to speak on a proposal from Florida Tech to move our tailgating activities to the Palm Bay Magnet High School. We believe that this will really help our game environment. Tailgating includes alcohol, and it includes cooking. And we're, we know that the school system is concerned about this, and I'm going to address this in a short time. Game environment is so critical to participation. You'll see that throughout the country now. You see a lot of schools addressing game environment to try to improve it. And of course, that's school spirit and community spirit. We believe that as the only football college in Brevard County, we really want to serve the community well. So we're addressing a number of these issues to improve the, the game environment. We have a great team. Our team went 8-3 the past year, made the NCAA playoffs. We've been, I think, great partners with Palm Bay High, Palm Bay Magnet High School. We've worked with them for six years. It's been a very close relationship. I don't think it could be better. We've constructed a lot of items, from scoreboards to press boxes, improved the facilities. It's been such a good relationship that it's actually carried over into the academic side, where we have been able to provide dual enrollment at our college at no cost to the student. I think that is, just shows how this partnership can grow and, and benefit all, all parties. Before I address this, I went to the Palm Bay High, Palm Bay Magnet High School and talked to the administrators there, and I saw no opposition to moving it forward. They know that we know how to manage activities. They, we've done it for six years. We've had absolutely no problems with our six years of having football games there. We utilize the Melbourne Police Department, as well as our campus security, in providing the security necessary. And as far as leaving it like we found it, we have a professional service that cleans, cleans the stands. And of course, if there's tailgating, they would be doing the same, working closely with the school system. We, you know, it's important that we have liability insurance. And the university has four additional insured for Brevard County, naming Brevard County schools.
Mr. Juergens, I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up. Do you have?
I've just finished.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
We are going to discuss that at the end of our meeting tonight. I don't know if you want to hang out all the way till the end. If not, you can watch us online from your phone or something. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Our next, oh, our next speaker is Justin Henry.
Good evening. My name is Justin Henry, and I am a member of Space Coast Cultural Arts and Business Organization's Social Entrepreneurship and Civic Engagement Program Developing Leaders, located at 2295 Washington Street, Palm Bay, Florida 32905. I serve as President of the Developing Leaders Class of 2019, and this comment is on behalf of our group. As students of Brevard Public Schools and developing leaders in our local communities, we would like to amend the lunches our school cafeteria serves us. Numerous high school students eat lunch from their school's cafeteria. According to a writer at Brevard Times, as of June 12, 2018, 39,000 students in Brevard County qualify for schools, for food assistance programs within Brevard Public Schools. That is almost 53% of the students that are enrolled in Brevard Public Schools. School lunches may be the only time they have access to a healthy meal, but according to an article in the Brevard Times, 22% of Brevard Public Schools, charter schools, and private schools received an unsatisfactory rating during a food health inspection by the Florida Department of Health in 2018, and some failed up to four follow-up inspections as well. The most recent failed inspection was in January 2019. We will not name the schools, but we have provided all the members of the school board with a written copy of our proposal, and the schools will be listed.
Excuse me, one second. I need to restart the time. And I don't think we caught which group you all are from. If one of you could state that a little slower for us?
Space Coast Cultural Arts and Business Organization.
Cultural Arts?
And Business Organization.
And Business Organization. And where are you, where are you guys, this is the first I've heard of you all. Where, where are you from? Where are you located? You can answer, sir. Are you their leader?
Washington.
Your instructor? Can you come forward for a second? Sorry for breaking our usual code here.
My name is Alberta Clingsales. I'm the Executive Director of Space Coast Cultural Arts and Business Organization, Charities, Inc. And we have a program that is a social entrepreneurship and civic engagement program. So our students learn to be social entrepreneurs, and they run a business, so that they can buy their school clothes and other supplies they need for school, as well as fund their checking and savings accounts. We also, as a part of that, they're social, they have to find a social issue in their community that they want to address. And the issue, they decide on the topic, and the issue that they talked about was school lunches. And so they talked about their personal experiences, and I said, well, that's just you all. Can you prove it with some other research? They did impeccable research, found not only the problem, but also the solution. And so they're here today to make that presentation. And I gave the deputy the five copies for the school board. I didn't give one to the superintendent, but I do have another copy. I might as well give you my copy. And, and they'll continue on with the presentation, if that's okay.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to hearing from each of them. If you each could state what school you attend, just so we can get an idea. If you're talking about lunches that you've had, that would be helpful for me.
I attend Bayside High School.
Okay. And you, are you, sorry. Are you, you're Justin Henry?
Yes.
Okay. And then, are you, did you finish, or did I interrupt you?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next up is Zavron Pelham. Did I get that right?
Xavier.
Xavier.
All right. And I attend Heritage High. The Brevard Times article also quoted a Florida Department of Health employee who has worked at six different Brevard Public Schools this year. Quote, "They, they're all garbage. I can't tell you how many kids I've sent home after lunch for stomach aches, vomiting, or diarrhea. I dread 11:00 a.m. every day because I know the kids will be coming down after eating school lunch. I'm not going to lie, I thought they were faking it," she added. "But I noticed the trend in all the schools. I realized it was the food. I started, I started asking them if they had school lunch or packed lunch. And 99% were school lunch."
I attend Bayside High School, and, okay. We are proposing a healthy choice for school lunch, and here today to request permission to pilot the salad bars at school program at Palm Bay Magnet High School, and technical assistance to write the salad bars to school grant. The salad bars to school program, school program awards school grant for free salad bars. Research in school across the country demonstrated that the children significantly increased their produce consumption when given the variety of choices in the school salad bar. When offered multiple fruits and vegetable choices, children respond by, and correspond, incorporating greater variety on their plate, increasing their overall produce consumption. If we get the grant, Palm Bay High, High School, and eventually all schools in Brevard that want it will receive free salad bars. We met and discussed the pilot program with Palm Bay, Palm Bay Magnet High School Principal Judd Kaminsky on July 3, 2019. We requested a tour of the cafeteria and the kitchen, and Principal Kaminsky took us to the tour and expressed his support of the idea. He also stated that the school currently does not have a fresh food salad bar as an offering. We also presented our proposal for a healthy choice for school lunch to Palm Bay City Council and received a letter of support from the full council. We have concluded a copy of the letter in the written report we submitted to each of you on the board.
Thank you, Madison? Is that your name, Madison? Okay. Sir, if you'd state your name before you start?
Good evening. My name's Demaris, and I attend Heritage. According to the salad bars to school program, if a grant is approved, the school would receive one portable 72-inch, five-well insulated salad bar, two tray slides, five pan chillers, divider bars, two 4-inch deep full pans with covers, four 4-inch deep half pans with covers, 12 4-inch deep quarter pans with covers, five buffet chilling pads, and 16 serving tongs. There are requirements that must be met before a school district can apply for a grant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Terrell Brooks, and I attend Palm Bay Magnet High School. To meet eligibility requirements to apply for the salad bar to school, for the salad bar school grant, the, the applying school district must, oh, the applying school district must be a participant in the National School Lunch Program. On Monday, on Monday, July 15, 2019, we called the Food and Nutrient Office here at, here at the Brevard Public School District Office, and confirmed that Brevard Public Schools, Brevard Public School District is a participant of the National School Lunch Program. The second requirement for a salad bar, for salad bars to school grant, you must offer the salad bar as part of the reimbursable meal served in our, in your district. The six-foot-five-well salad bar package is appropriate for the location that serves at least 100 reimbursable meals daily. According to Principal Judd Kaminsky at Palm Bay Magnet High School, the school serves over 100 reimbursable meals daily. Based on, based on our research, Brevard Public School District met all the requirements applying for, to apply for the salad bars to school grant. We are excited to learn, we are excited to also learn that the grant provides training for food services, food service teams, so that we can learn systems and tools to manage daily productions, production, as well as to show the students that the salad bar, that the salad bar is a great addition to their meal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Kevin, and I attend Covenant Christian School. As stated earlier, we are committed to finding ways to increase access to healthy fruits and vegetables in our school lunch program. Salad bars are a great way to do it, while at the same time instill healthy eating habits and prevent children, and prevent childhood obesity in our community. We hope that you will seriously consider our proposal and take advantage of this opportunity and apply for free salad bars to schools grant. We realize that you may not be able to make this decision tonight, but ask that you please contact us once your decision is made. Our contact information has been provided to you. Our contact information has been provided to you. We are grateful for the opportunity to speak here tonight and thankful to Space Coast Cultural Arts and Business Organization for helping us to understand that we do have a voice to implement positive change in the communities where we live and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure if you have any, I'm thinking, I'm not sure if you have any questions for me.
Uh, well, I have one question for the youth behind you. If there are salad bars in your school, would you eat them? And how many days a week do you think you would eat from these salad bars? Because we have been pushing for some salad bars and we've tried them in some schools and often they sit there untouched, which is super frustrating. So if your salad bars in your school, are you going to eat from the salad bar?
Me personally, yes. I used to attend Odyssey Charter School and they had salad bars there. So I would always get servings of fruit and vegetables from there. So I always ate from the salad bars each day, so.
Okay, I want, just hands up. Would you eat from your salad bars? Tell them the truth. Tell the truth.
What grade did you implement in? Was it high school?
Well, I'm going to ask you all to meet. We have our Head of Food Services back there, our Director of Food Services, Mr. Kevin Thornton. Can you raise your hand? He's in charge of all of our food purchasing and all of our cafeterias and he decides what we serve and what we don't. And I heard some comments about food not being good, but I just want to give Mr. Thornton a little credit because he works very hard on our menus and I worked very closely with him last year on getting our chicken upgraded. I mean, anybody getting the drumsticks and chicken wings in your schools? Okay. I mean, what? No? No chicken wings? Is it not every secondary school, Mr. Thornton? It is? You should be. And we also put in three healthy salad options and a Mediterranean pita. So we are working to get school lunches healthier, but I would love a salad bar. So if all of you want to meet with Mr. Thornton, he'll meet with you in the back and you can start telling him about your grant and we can see if it's something we can apply for. Do any more school members want to address this group before I ship them off to Mr. Thornton?
So I was fascinated by your group and I jumped on your website real quick. And one of the things you guys said was entrepreneurship and I thought I heard somebody say they guys make stuff and sell it. How do we find out how to buy it? Do you guys have websites? Do you guys have links? Do you have products somewhere? Is there anything going on? Because this is a great marketing moment right here, guys.
Well, the entrepreneurship program, we decided to sell jewelry and having in our T-shirts. And we have a flyer and we also have an Instagram page where you guys can follow us. I'm pretty sure we have an online website or store up right now running.
What is your Instagram page? What's your?
D O B O U G I E. So that is D O Bougee. That's the name of our store. We're located at the flea market.
And then I noticed on the website that you guys had a mixed-use facility that looks like you guys. Is that what the dream is, is to create that or what is that?
Yes. Yes, we want to open up a cultural arts and business center and we are looking for a school to partner with. We already have our conceptual designs and things drawn out. So what we're looking for is a partner to get it done. So it would be a 364-seater. So, yeah, we're looking for a school to partner with.
So is there a way that you can get that information? Because I'm not on Instagram. My daughter teases me all the time about that. Is there a way we can get that? So I can push that out and then?
Definitely.
And then I think you have some school board members. I'd love you to come up into my district and I'd try to work with you, but they're going to try to steal you down south. And you guys are located off Washington right now? I didn't see the web, the address.
Yes, the students actually have a business at Renninger's. It's our entrepreneurship simulation center. So if you go to the Renninger's Flea Market near I-95 and their booth is in there. And they work there on Saturdays and Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So all of their jewelry is all natural jewelry. So they do crystals and semi-precious stones, highwayman T-shirts. So we have some Florida highwayman infused apparel there as well. And the e-commerce site, we're learning how to put it up. We don't have a lot of money, but we're learning how to develop it ourselves right now. So it's not operational, but it will be. But we'll keep in touch and get you the information. And I just wanted to make sure the superintendent got a copy of the proposal as well.
I want to tell you, thank you. And what was your name again?
My name is Alberta.
You're the one that founded it in 2014. You're amazing. And good luck, you guys. I mean, I know we're going to get you guys your, she's the salad, I mean, she waged war on the man in the back to try to get everything that you just heard. So you definitely have a definite positive group up here. But I am just fascinated by the fact that you guys came here today, took your time out, put together speeches. You know, you guys are trying to make an impact in your community and, you know, that's how it all starts. And thank you for taking your time to come out here and do this. I get goosebumps. You guys are awesome, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any more comments for them before they? We're looking forward to it. Thank you so much. Oh, I think the superintendent. Go ahead, Dr. Mullins.
So I want to commend you for using your student voice in such a positive way as well and the courage to come up here and talk to a bunch of people sitting up here in suits and so on. When you talk to Mr. Thornton, I know he's going to extend an invitation.
Sample his food. I've been there.
A full-blown behind-the-scenes tour of all things food to kind of round your food service experience, our food service program. And you can help be a student advisory council, how we can be better to include being a part of our schools, getting back into your schools and so on. So Mr. Thornton can talk to you about that and we look forward to getting your feedback.
Thank you. Would any board member like to address any of the concerns of the other speakers? With the exception of Mr. Jenkins, only because we're going to discuss that at the end. So if there's any other, anybody else you want to address before we move on?
I thought there was nine.
Yes, every speaker did speak. Maybe you didn't number the, all the students or something. I just do want to say to Mr. Calucci, I don't recall ever declining a workshop with you. So if you have record of that, I would love for you to, maybe I don't remember sending an email or telling you that I wouldn't go to a workshop, but if you have some record of that, I'd like to see it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are eight items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any of these items? What are the wishes of the board? Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Does any board member need a break? Are we, Pam, are we timed? Is it timed certain? Do we have to wait to start at any specific time? Okay. Recess the normal meeting and move forward? Okay, we are going to recess our meeting to go into our public hearing meeting and then we will recess the public hearing meeting and go back into our normal meeting. We're officially recessed. And do I have to bang again to be? Okay. And now we're officially in our public hearing. We will now, oh, I had actually a part to read there. Excuse me. We are opening our tentative public hearing for the 2019-2020 proposed millage rates and tentative budget. Dr. Mullins.
Mrs. Chairman and members of the board, Ms. Penny Zirker, Chief Financial Officer, will make a presentation on the proposed 2019-20 budget and millage levy.
Good evening. Welcome to our hearing, to all the members in the public. This is our first opportunity to look at a proposed budget. It's important to start off to realize this is not our final budget. There is still about six weeks' worth of work that can be put into this budget to improve it. Tonight, we will be looking at the millage, the tentative millage that will be voted on tonight and then finalized in September as well as the budget. Looking at our timeline, we started this process back in March with the opening of the legislative session. And today is our tentative hearing. Our final step will be on September 10th at our final budget hearing. In this presentation, I'm going to go over enrollment projections, our taxable property values, proposed millage, proposed budget, and next steps in the process. Starting out with a membership, our student membership in the district has been slightly declining while our charter schools have been slightly increasing. Looking at 1920, our district membership is 68,413 projected with charter schools 7,010 for a total of 75,423. Charter schools are rising by 426 students. The district is going down by 141 and the total district is expected to grow by 285. In comparison to the next highest or the first highest year of, our highest year of membership, '08-'09, where the district was 70,951 and our charter schools were 3,049. FTE is different than our membership. Membership is just the children who walk through the door. FTE considers seat time. Are they in their seats for one class or the full day? And however many times they sit in the class defines the FTE and weighted. And then it is weighted by the type of student that we're working with. In this case, our FTE has followed our membership, declining slightly at the district level and increasing at the charter. However, we are anticipating in the total district 168 increase of FTE as compared to 133 in 1819. Our taxable property values have rebounded significantly over the last 10 years. For 1920, we're at $45,005,674,986. That's up $3.2 billion from 1819 or a 7.61% increase. This is slightly down from where we've been the last couple of years, which was about an 8%, 8.1% increase, but still looking very positive. When we compare to 2009-10, which was our historical high before 1718, that year, we are $12.3 billion, excuse me, $4.1 billion over what that property value was in '09-10. But the better news is in the last five years, we have increased $12.3 billion from our low point. That's a 37% increase in property values. Our proposed millage is made up of three different millages. There's the required local effort. This is the millage that the board is required to levy in order to receive state funding for the operating fund through the Florida Education Finance Program. This year, the millage has been lowered to 3.838 and it is, makes up approximately 63.1% of our total millage and it is used for the operating expenses in the general fund. Our second millage is the discretionary local effort. This is .748. It provides approximately $448 per FTE for a total of $32,600. It is subject to compression, which is the good news. They guaranteed for 1920 to receive at least $555 per student. Since we did not receive that, our FEFP funding includes compression of $107 per student or an additional $7.8 million. And again, this is discretionary funding for the general fund. Our last millage is the local capital improvement, more commonly referred to as the capital outlay tax. It is 1.5 mills. That brings into the district about $65.5 million. Debt service is the first paid out of that millage and that is $36,613,000. We cover some maintenance expenses out of the general fund for $8,300,000 and our property insurance for $4,945,000. That's left us about $15.6 million in capital needs and these funds are for the capital outlay fund. While some of them may eventually get spent due to the function we're using them for in the general fund, they start and are tied to the capital outlay restrictions. Talking more on our proposed millage rates, this is a visual graph of where we've been over the last 10 years and we can see that we've had a significant decrease since 2011-12. That decrease is 2.026 mills or almost 25% from the high. Going most recently in 1516 to today, we'll see, we've seen a 1.291 millage reduction or 17.5%. Our millage from, for 1920 is .213 mills less than they were in 1819. The truth in millage law, commonly known as TRIM, requires us to compare the millage, which we know is to 1.213 mills less than last year, to what the law describes as the rolled-back rate. And what this rate is, is the millage that we would levy to receive the same dollars we received in 1819 on 1920 property values. It's not a real millage. It's a millage to compare what it would be on this year's property values to receive the same. It's to look and see what the tax increase is as a result of property values. In this case, our rolled-back millage, being the center column here, is 3.8452 for required local effort, .71 for local discretionary, and 1.4238 for local capital improvement for a total of 5.979. So 5.979 mills on the $45 billion this year would give us the, essentially the revenue we received in 1819. Because that is less than the millage we are required to levy, which is the 6.086, we are required to announce a tax increase of 1.79%. Looking at the impact of this tax change, two columns here, boxes here. The first box represents your primary homeowner. The second one represents a vacation home or something that is not the primary homeowner. While in this graphic, we've explained, we've shown $100,000 value, these would be two different types of homes. Under the primary home, if the home value was, in 1819, was $100,000, under the Save Our Homes cap, the value would have only been allowed to go up for tax purposes by $1,600. The homeowner would be able to take their homestead exemption of $25,000 and their taxable value of property would be $76,600. Under the 1819 rates, the actual millage rates, not the rolled-back, the homeowner paid $472.43. In this scenario, due to the Save Our Homes cap, the homeowner under the new rates, which have lowered but also received a cap on the increase, would be $466.19 or a reduction in taxes of $6.24. And the second block representing something like a vacation home in our area, in this case, they would not be affected by the Save Our Homes cap and their home value of $100,000, they would have received the full 7.61% increase in value, taking their property value to $107,610. Under the 1819 rates, they would have paid $629.90. Under the proposed 1920, although it is a lesser millage rate due to the increase in their property values, they will pay $25 and a penny more than they would have in 1819. Looking at our proposed tentative- Looking at our proposed tentative budget, it's important to note that the budget is a plan. It's not our actuals. But for the truth in millage laws and TRIM advertising, we're required to mimic as if it would be an actual, hence the fund balance numbers at the bottom. In this case, we're looking at operating revenues of $559 million, expenditures of $568 million, with transfers in from other funds of almost $17 million. This would leave at a mimicked actual budget, $66 million planned in fund balance, and that is made up of non-spendable property and prepaid's of $4,144. Restricted, our state categoricals were in 7.5. The last committed, and this is still here because we will not appropriate that out until September, when we do the first budget amendment, because at this point, the board has not voted to approve that yet. So that will eventually go away, of $1,952,952. And then the assigned, which is our school operations, of $5,466,835. Unassigned, $47,188,346. It's important to note that the actual details within those categories can be found in our budget book, which is available on the board agenda or can be requested from my office. And the details are found on both Page 12 and Page 17, and to the full breakout that we've presented in the past to the board. Special revenue, we're looking at $86 million coming in and $86 million going out. Debt service is a little higher this year at 41 to pay off a QZAB qualified zone, I forget what the A stands for, help me, Joanne, academy bond. This was taken back in 2004 for about $3.5 million. Over the five years following that, up through 2019, funds were placed into a savings account or sinking fund, and that account has just been building funds till we had enough money to pay off that bond. And it is due for payment. The bond comes due this year. We'll take those monies out of that savings account and pay off that bond. Otherwise, we're looking at about $36,700,000 for our regular debt service payment. Capital projects, we're anticipating revenues coming in in total of just under $127 million. Expenditures are $135 million. This is carryforward of appropriated dollars from the previous year from either projects crossing the year or being started in the new year after all the planning was done in the prior year. Our total government would be $772 million in revenue, $830 million in expenditures, and between the funds, $54 million will transfer. Our enterprise fund is our after-school program. We do continue to carry what appears to be a negative fund balance. I remind the board, this is that crazy governmental accounting standards board journal entry that we were required to place for the pension liability of the FRS a few years ago. It is not real dollars. It is all on paper, and it's all based on what's going on at the FRS. Our internal service fund, this is just a real first blush look. We just, as of today, received our claims liabilities and can begin to really look at this fund and do a complete workout on it for the budget for the final. Again, the same at the bottom. You can see how those fund balances get categorized. The majority of them will be restricted because everything but operating has external restrictions on it. Our 10-year capital plan, which was originally presented to the board at the June 25th workshop and discussed again this afternoon at your capital budget workshop, is currently set up for 1920, $79.3, excuse me, $126.8 million, with total planned expenditures of $173. As you know, coming out of the workshop today, we do have quite a bit of work to come back and bring back to you based on the feedback provided to the board, so this will change by the time we get to final. Next step is taking board feedback and adjustments from discussions that we have had, going back and doing a final review and updating the budget, completing that by August 23rd so that we can be prepared for the September 10th board meeting. We will hold again like this meeting. The final hearing is part of the regular board meeting, and that board meeting will start at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. After that, we will be prepared to make notification to the Florida Department of Education, the Florida Department of Revenue, and the Brevard Town Tax Collector. Anyone in the community who would like more information concerning our budget may contact my office at the information on the screen. We'll be happy to provide that information out to them or answer any of their questions. At this time, we'd open it for questions or discussion or feedback from the board on the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sirkar. Does any board member have a comment or question for Ms. Sirkar?
I'm going right now.
Mr. Susan.
Yes, I wanted it to be note, if you look at the numbers that we have received because of the rollback rate, that if you go back to the 2012 numbers, meaning how much if they wouldn't have rolled us back, we would be in our pockets today, just this year alone would be an increase of $90 million. So had they not rolled us back since 2012, had they allowed us to grow with the actual surrounding community, we would be receiving $90 million extra this year than we would have last year. If you just go back to 2015 and you say how much we would be receiving this year if they had not rolled us back since then, it's $58.5 million. So to say the least, the rollback is killing us. Thank you for providing that. When is the actual date of the budget due to the state?
September 11th, the day after the next hearing.
Gotcha. And that's for our budget. When is the actual budget of this year, the spend that we have, runouts, everything else, that's due the same day?
It is. The actual expenditures is due the same day as well.
Will we receive prior to the September 10th budget for us, the numbers from the previous year's expenditures solidified?
At this point, we're on track to provide that to the board on August 23rd.
Thank you. Also, we talked before about $1.4 million in lapse salary only going towards the actual retirees portion of that. Have we started looking at the other portions of transfers and?
Yes, we have a slightly large project going on on that to validate and see if there's anything else in addition.
Is there inside of that, does that also include the vacant positions that we have not filled throughout last year?
Vacant positions is something we're also looking at. We actually have a list of items I've presented to Dr. Mullins and other things we're continuing to look at moving forward with the budget.
Perfect. And then, because the millage actually came in higher than the last time we were here, what is the increase in the budget since the last time we came? I think the millage came in a little bit higher than what we were? Could you reflect what the operating budgets increase to that was? Sorry.
I don't have specifically what the total budget has increased, but the millage itself went up about $1.3 million into the fund. And then we've been doing some other work towards budgetary savings and other things to it. And I believe you all have at your podium a copy of the most recent calculation of new and lapse recurring for your information, which is reflective of what's in the budget book.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Sirkar. Does any other board member have a question at this point? Okay, it's now time for public comments. The hearing is now open for public comments. We will, in accordance with Florida law, accept the speakers in the following order: the 2019-2020 proposed millage levy, followed by the 2019-2020 tentative budget. Is there any individual that would like to address the board on the 2019-2020 proposed millage levy?
I would.
Mr. Calucci. Ms. Sunball, is there the three-minute time limit? And do all the rules of conduct?
Yes.
What's the word?
Just the ones you did before. Apply.
Apply. Mr. Calucci, just to remind you, this portion of public comments is on the millage only. The budget comments will be next, of which you can speak again if you choose. I'm going to set the timer for three minutes. And do you need me to read the rules of public comments again?
If the last one I skated by with, this should be fine.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so talking about millage, I do need to talk a little bit about context. Teacher salary is 46 in the nation in the state of Florida per capita student funding. Florida is 43 in the nation. We do have a funding crisis. Our teachers here in Brevard are 30th in the state in average teacher pay, and we are $2,170 behind the state average. I do agree with what Mr. Susan was saying about how these rollback rates are impacting our budget, but there are things that you could have chose to do. So the woe-is-me attitude needs to stop. There is something that could be done, and that would be to go out for additional millage. And it is something that this board, against the recommendation of the previous superintendent, decided not to do. That is in your power. It is not in your power to change the rollback rates. We can't do it. But you can go out for additional millage, which would increase our funding drastically and could be used for teacher salary as well as other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Am I allowed to ask him a question? I believe so. Mr. Calucci, Ms. Belford has a question for you.
Do you want to say you can respond to me? Otherwise, it would be pointless to ask the question, right? So I just want to clarify, and for the sake of all of us being on the same page, in previous conversations that you and I have had about millage, there has been some wavering as-to-support from the union on a millage effort. So am I to take your comment that we should go for a millage, that you are now willing to support a millage again? Because quite frankly, even if this board decides to go for a millage, we wouldn't be successful unless we had the backing of the union and the teachers. So I think that's an important clarification, if you want.
Well, and just to clarify, our union has, for years, been making the push to go out for millage, and Mr. Bennett can confirm that, that we've been leading the charge for that. And, you know, it came to the vote or the discussion last May, and Ms. Belford was the only board member to vote in favor of the millage. And for various reasons, other board members decided not to do so. As of late, with everything that's been going on, with the salary debacle, I'll call it, this is going to be a difficult, heavy lift. And it's going to be a heavy lift with our teachers because of the trust factor. I am willing to have further discussion, to look at timelines, to look at, you know, how the board would like to spend that money and bring it to the membership and get a feel from the membership if they would be willing to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci, and thank you for your cooperativeness. Are there more speakers that would like to speak on the proposed 2019-2020 proposed millage rates? Ms. Skipper, state your name for the record, and please go forward.
Vanessa Skipper, Vice President, BFT. Just echoing what Anthony was discussing earlier about the millage, this is, again, a positive solution that we brought forward many times to this board. Obviously, in the past year, we've gone back and forth, back and forth, but I believe I handed every single one of you at one point information on millage, which county had extra millage and extra half-cent or extra full-cent. I believe almost, actually, every county on the eastern seaboard of Florida, all the way up to Volusia County, except for us, passed extra millage. And those teachers in all of those counties, from Miami Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, all of those counties coming up, they're getting a significant, significant pay increase. And if there's one thing that I always try to teach my students, and I think we saw an example of that earlier, is don't come talk about a problem if you don't have a solution. So in further discussions, whether it's going out for millage or whatever we decide to do, I would hope that you all understand, especially since we just had that presentation about what's happening with the RLE and the rollback, that we were bringing a solution to the board to make a problem better. And we will continue to do so, and we hope that you take us seriously with those solutions. And I think just to kind of piggyback on the question and answer just then, if we're taken seriously, I think that will change the game in a lot of things that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the proposed millage rates? Is there any individual that would like to address the board on the 2019-2020 tentative Please state your name.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, my name is Kyle Savage. Oh, I need to get this up on my phone. And I'm a very proud teacher in Brevard Public Schools. Since the impasse hearing, I started looking at the budget, because there was a lot of talk about what was in the budget and what wasn't in the budget. There was a lot of numbers presented. And I will be honest with you, when I first started looking at it, I kind of understood why some of you guys were hesitant. However, I feel like you've been looking at it all year, and you were able to have the information. So looking at the tentative budget for 2019 and 20, there was quite a few things that stood out to me, but one thing was on how the page marked. I want to say it's Page 11. When you look at instructional total spending, now, I understand that's a line item. I understand there's a lot that goes into that line item. The majority of that line item is salaries. If we looked at the adopted budget, which kind of is a problem, because in this budget, there is no actuals. Everything we're looking at is adopted, amended, and then adopted again are the tentative budget for this year. But in the adopted budget, you guys adopted $372 million. For 2019 and 20, you're adopting $370 million. That's a decrease in instructional spending. Now, when we were at the impasse hearing, it was told that this is reoccurring money. It wasn't in the budget. But on your own budget documents, we're going to spend less money this year going into 1920 than we did in 1819? That doesn't make sense if everything is reoccurring dollars. Along that trend, I would like to point out, if you would allow me, we went through and looked at the actual budgets that was from 2015 to 16, 16 to 17, 17 to 18. We looked at actual, what was budgeted and what was amended. In 2015-16, the district budgeted $355 million for salaries, instructional, that line item. They amended it to $360 million. The actual spent was $347 million. That was money that dropped to the fund balance. I know we look at the fund balance, and in the beginning of the year, it's $66 million. It drops to $32, and then it goes back up. All we're doing is moving money to say we don't have a fund balance. If you look at 16-17, same trend. The district budget, $363 and a half million. They amended it, you guys amended it to $367 million. You actually spent $350 million on that instructional line item. 17-18, same thing. You guys budgeted, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude by saying you guys. The board budgeted $373 million, almost $374 million. You amended it to $384 million. The actual file from the state was $370 million. Every single year, that has been millions of dollars that were budgeted and never spent. I'm sorry, my time's up. All this information we use from DOE records, and it's all there. And I would love to talk to anybody that had any questions about it. So thank you.
I appreciate the information you just shared. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about the 2019-2020 tentative budget?
On page 11. On page three of the proposed tentative budget, I see that your fund balance as of July 1st, 2019, is $58,322,324. Your fund balance on July 1st, 2018, was $58,322,324. Sorry.
Mr. Calucci, we would like to follow along. Can you? We just got the books back out. And can you start over?
Yeah.
I'll start your time over, too, sir.
And hopefully, I'll say the number right this time, too.
It's actually the page, Mr. Calucci.
On page three of the proposed tentative budget.
Proposed, oh, on the, in the, do you have the book or do you have just the presentation? We've got.
The book.
Okay. Okay. We'll start there with you.
Okay. Page three, proposed tentative budget, fund balance of July, as of July 1st, 2019, is Fund balance.
One second. We aren't seeing the same numbers as you. Right here. We were looking at the bottom. I just want to make sure we're following, so we understand what you're saying.
All right. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Fund balance on July 1st, 2018, was the exact same number, $58,322,324. So, I'm trying to find out why the actual fund balance number is not given here? Or are we saying that the fund balance, one year later, was exactly the same amount to the dollar? Now, on page five of your May amendments, I don't know if you have those in front of you, your May amended budget, the fund balance was amended to $32,410,89. But the actual amount listed in those May amendments.
What page? What page? What page?
I do not have the page, page five.
Yeah, it's on our agenda?
May amendments.
No, that's a financial statement.
He's talking about the budget amendment.
That's in our June 25th board agenda, if you want to go back there. If we go back to the June 25th board agenda, that's when we approve that.
Is that where you pulled it from?
Yes.
Give us just a second. It is item, it's item 15.
What'd you say it was, May what?
May, I'm sorry, the June 25th, the June 25th board meeting agenda. Item 15.
What page were you on? Five?
Yes, on page five of the May amendments. I got to do a formative assessment here. Can I get like a thumbs up sideways? Okay, all right. All right. So, the fund balance was amended down to $32,410,000. But if you look somewhere over there, you will see the actual amount in that fund balance Okay? So, what I'm trying to figure out is.
Hang on. Are you, you are in the budget amendment, not in the. Okay, then, that's, okay.
That's something different.
That's something different. Yeah, on tonight's agenda. Okay, he said a budget amendment, so.
Hold on, we changed agendas.
Yeah, go back to today's agenda.
Looks like your time's up. Just kidding.
So, what I'm trying to get at is why, after this being such a contentious amount of money at the legislative hearing, why don't we know what the actual amount in the fund balance is right now? All right? So, we're seeing it was $58 million, and then $58 million, then it was amended to $32 million, but there was really $110 million in there. So, what is that fund balance really at? That is something that is crucial going forward, especially after the whole legislative hearing and magistrate hearing centering on this fund balance. Did you, do you want me to hand you a copy of this? Or do we figure?
I think Ms. Belford finally, we pulled it up. We have to log out. We have to log back in to get to a different agenda, so it just took her a minute.
Are we?
This is my record time, being up here.
Yeah. I don't even have the clock running on you, Mr. Calucci. Ms. Campbell has a question for you, I think?
Well, not a question, but an answer, because you asked us a question. Are we to that part yet?
Oh, is there more you want to say? Or can we ask you some questions?
Because I asked a similar question earlier today, and I think Ms. Belford actually asked the same question, too. So, if you would, mind Ms. Serker giving him the same answer you gave me, please.
Sure. The budget amendment reflects what's called budgeted fund balance. There are two different basic accounting systems. One balances the budget, and one is the actual accounting system. So, we have budgeted fund balance, which as we appropriate the carryforwards in September and other funds out of the fund balance. In the budget amendment, the budget amendment fund balance will reduce. When it comes to the actual in your monthly financial statements through the year, fund balance varies by receipt of dollars. So, our ad valorem dollars all come in in December. It's a huge chunk of money that gets spent throughout the year. And the way our cash flows are, while all that money is for the 18-19 year, from a cash flow basis, that's paying salaries, supplies, and everything going through. So, it makes the monthly financial statements look larger fund balance at this time of year compared to when we get to the end. We have provided, since publishing this book to Dr. Mullins, an estimate of what we think the final fund balance will be. We are not closed. There are a number of items that don't come until next week or after August 1st from DOE. So, closing date is scheduled for August 9th. But we have prepared an analysis looking at what we think the accruals will be. It will probably be around $56 to $57 million with the same breakouts. And as soon as we get a final update on that, we will share that with the board.
So, just to clarify, the reason why our, you're showing that our, excuse me, I'm going to go back to what we were looking at before, that our fund balance on July 1st is the same amount as it showed at the beginning of last fiscal year is because we have to put.
Right. We use it as an estimate, because we don't have the books closed, and we'd rather use something that we know is more realistic and explainable. And so, practice in this district has been to use the previous year's ending fund balance as the beginning for the new budget. When we get to the final hearing, you get the book in August 23rd. It will have the actual fund balance in it, following the close of the books on August 9th.
Thank you, Ms. Serker. Mr. Susan?
So, when I look at this amendment, and I look up at the available, the actuals, right? It's $537 million for the total revenues. Total expenses are $484 million. And the ending fund balance is $110,480, roughly. So, what I'm hearing you say is that the reason that that ending fund balance is that is the balance of what our actual fund balance is, along with the revenue that we have to spend by the end of the year, and we've actually only spent $484. Is that correct?
Right. We still have, for that budget amendment, that financial statement, two months of salaries, which is the biggest portion, almost, it's 78% of our budget. And so, that money sitting in the fund balance equates the cash in the balance sheet that will be used to pay those expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Ms. Serker? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 2019-2020 tentative budget? Ms. Skipper?
Vanessa Skipper. I just had some questions, because I, too, was looking at that number. So, I'm looking at your proposed tentative budget on page nine. And again, the fund balance, right there, for 2018-2019, all the way across from adopted to amended to projected, is the same number. And I was just curious as to why we can't have actual numbers for this particular hearing on page nine, but we are able to have actual numbers if you flip to page 25. So, on page 25, we have actual expenditures, estimated expenditures, and then there is another page, which I have lost my place, so. Special revenue. Yeah, 25. So, I'm just wondering why we can have actual funds and parts of this proposed budget, but in not other places? While I realize that there's a lot of money to spend, it is the end of July, so I feel like we could have some more actual numbers to actually look at. So, I'm just curious as to why we don't.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Ms. Serker, do you want to address that?
My explanation would be, again, we're not closed with the books. We would have to pick a month, May 31st, and say, here's what we're using. We wouldn't want to use, you know, even June 30th.
I think Ms. Skipper's question, though, was on page 25. There's a column that says actual expenditures.
There's an estimated expenditure there. It's a much smaller fund, much easier to do the estimates.
Those are still estimates, even though it says actual at the top?
It doesn't say actual for 2019.
2018, okay. And for 2019, it says estimated expenditure. So, those are just estimates again?
Yes. There is an estimated expenditures. It's a much smaller fund, much less line items. On the tentative budget for operating, we haven't included. If it's the board's desire in the future, we'll be happy to include it. The final budget and the CAFR will provide actual expenditures and comparisons to budgets as well.
Thank you, Ms. Serker. I appreciate you answering questions on the fly. We, I think it's important, you know, it's just numbers, but it's large numbers, and there's a lot of data there. And it's important that we all are on the same page, so that we can have good information. Any more questions for Ms. Serker?
We didn't, we answered Anthony's question and Vanessa's question, but Mr. Savage, you would, we'll go back in all the years, we can talk about that later, but you did mention there's a decrease in instructional spending from the year we just ended into this coming year. And I think I, or I think Ms. Belford actually asked that question, so I want to make sure you, we get, we address that. Because that was some of the changes that we made in order to bring the salary increase that from the 1% to the 1.6%, some of that is included in that. So, I want to make sure we get you an answer, I think, tonight would be good.
Do you want me to share that response?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Belford.
So, looking at, there are a couple of things taking place there. One is, keep in mind that this is our first look at the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, there are vacancies that are not included in that number at this point, because we have not hired those positions yet. We also, in order to come up with additional dollars, last year, we had some changes in the number of allocations, the number of units that we have in the district. And so, you'll see, too, if you look in the electronic version of the budget book, you'll see that there are some changes in the number of people in various positions in the district. And I think that's what Ms. Campbell was referencing, that we had some reserve units that we eliminated, so that we can actually provide additional dollars last year. The only way that those dollars can be reoccurring dollars is if those reserve units go away in the following year. Otherwise, it would just be a one-time thing, non-recurring. So, that's some of that. I would love, Anthony and Vanessa have my contact information. I would love to sit down and talk to you about the previous years, because I actually have done that study myself and looked at previous years, actual versus spend versus amended for the past six or eight years, I think. So, if you would like to reach out to me after tonight, I'd be happy to talk to it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I did just want to point out, I do understand that this is a tentative, and there's a lot of, we started reading line items, and it's insane to me how much goes into the budget. So, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thanks for bringing that back up, Ms. Campbell. I overlooked that. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Anyone else to speak?
Yep, I've got to go back and ask one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, address the board on the, to the, is there anyone else that would like to address the board on the 2019-2020 tentative budget? Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
My name is Angela Dawson. I was here at the impasse hearing. I work for the Florida Education Association in consultation with the Brevard Federation of Teachers. We've been doing a lot of discussion about the budget, and we had a couple of additional questions on page 12. So, as part of the impasse hearing, we had a lot of discussion about the unassigned fund balance. And you can see that the adopted budget started out with some specific encumbrances, carryforwards, and a medical insurance fund of 3.1 that was discussed at the hearing. Then you can see in the amended budget, those were removed. And now, you can see that they're back in the adopted, in the proposed budget for, to be adopted into the future. We have a question for you about health insurance. Health insurance in our country is in a crisis. We have exploding costs in pharmacy that are driving a lot of expenses into our districts. And if you look at your May report, the very last page gives you a history, compares your current May expend for your health insurance to last year's May expend. And you can see you are, you have a bit of a trend going. I'm guessing that that's probably pharmacy and some increase possibly in things like emergency rooms or other types of things that your insurance committee, I'm sure, is looking into. But pharmacy is in trouble across our entire country. You need to address that, and you need to get ahead of that trend before it starts to tank your plan. Right now, you're still healthy. You still have money in reserve. However, holding $3.1 million out of your general fund for a rainy day is a bad plan. And here's why. Not all your employees are paid out of the general fund. If you have employees that are paid out of grants, paid out of categoricals, if you decide to wait until you need money and infusion, you're not charging those categoricals for the appropriate amount for the health insurance of those employees. You would be better off saying, we're going to add $10 per person, per head, per month, and start charging all your categoricals. Because probably about 80% is coming out of general fund for your staff, and maybe 20% out of categoricals, if you're kind of typical. So, you're really spending more money out of your general fund, doing it this way. And when you're building a budget, if you know that you need to increase an expense, you would increase that expense in the line item. You wouldn't hold money in reserve and put a label on it. So, if there's things here that need to be amended in your budget, I would suggest that you actually budget for the amount you think you need and not hold money into the reserve like that, because you will end up shortchanging your general fund when you could have been charging your categoricals for health insurance.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone have any comments or questions? Ms. Belford?
I would just like to clarify on the $3.1 million, only because I think I was the only one that was here when that $3.1 million fund was created initially. The $3.1 million that is in general fund for health insurance is not a rainy day fund for health insurance. It actually is part of the dollars that we pay, the district, the board, whoever you want to reference, pays for employee premiums for health care. And so, when this fund was brought about, it was 2015. At that point, Dr. Bingley was our superintendent, and his solution, because our premium year and our budget year were not aligned, his solution, and the former CFO, came up with the solution to allow that portion of premiums to drop to the bottom line and utilize $3.1 million of the funds that fall to the bottom line to pay that portion of health insurance premiums. And that is something that has just continued. It is not, in fact, a rainy day fund. That's why it goes away in September, October, whenever it changes. And then, the next year, when we have funds drop to the bottom line, we set aside $3.1 million of those funds for those health insurance premiums as well. So, I absolutely appreciate what you're saying about making sure that funds are coming from categoricals. This is just a very small portion of what we're paying for, for employee premiums.
Ms. Serker, can we change the way we do that? I hate the "we've always done it this way, let's just continue to do it." Would it be helpful if we?
We certainly could.
Move that into and pay it like the rest of our budget?
It's a recurring budgeting item. So, if we move it as part of the adopted budget up, then it's committing recurring dollars that could go to something such as. that could go to something such as salary increases. And that's why it's never been done since then. I would love to do that. I don't agree with what we're doing. It was, as Ms. Belford said, established before I was CFO. There were a number of things like that that were much smaller, we were able to get rid of, but at some point, the board would have to allocate $3.1 million recurring to be able to just move it back up to the premiums where it belongs.
It seems if it's been falling to the bottom line since 2015.
We're taking it out of lots of dollars.
That it's there.
To pay it.
So we'd still have to find $3.1 million worth of cuts?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 2019-2020 tentative budget? Hello, Mr. Bennett. You should give him to the officer. We have a new process now. We, we trust you, Mr. Bennett, but we haven't seen you in a while, so.
I have an extra copy, so I'll leave it here with Penny. There should be one for everybody. Good evening, Dr. Mullins and member of the board, and Amy and Pam. My name is Dan Bennett. I used to be President, I used to be Anthony before Anthony was Anthony, now I'm back to being Dan. I'm a teacher at Space Coast and loving it. I stumbled into this building a few weeks ago for lunch, it was Meatloaf Monday, and the room was packed, and y'all were having some kind of discussion up here. People were angry, everyone's wearing red. And I heard you all talking about something, budget money, and I heard my name come up. And so that pirked my interest, I came over, what are they talking about? And I said, oh, no, my students have fallen from grace, and I had to come back and go over some things, because you were talking about a Dan Bennett line of the budget, and it's something that I talked to you about for about 10 years. I didn't name it after myself. That was Dr. Blackburn named it that. But the problems we're having in this county are because there's a lesson that I failed to get all the way delivered. I got some of it delivered, but not all the way delivered. Across the state, as the magistrate pointed out, other districts are doing better than us, and it's only because they have completely mastered the lesson. You all are capable of this, you will get it, I'm confident. And I don't, I mean that sincerely. I'm optimistic that you will get there, we will get there, like all our other districts. And when we're talking about a 1% or 2% raise, everyone else won't be talking about a 2% or 3% raise. For the past four, five, six years, every other district is talking about 1% to 2% more than us, and it's just because we didn't get the whole lesson. So let me give you the history. If you look at my circle on the sheet, and I'm not suggesting that unencumbered fund balance and encumbered, I'm not suggesting they're equal, but just in the circle, it worked out to be the same. Your encumbered fund balance is money, don't spend, that's your school balance, is your payroll, can't spend it. But within there, you've got board contingencies, 19, but we talked a lot about that meeting, you talked a lot about board contingencies. Don't spend that, that's a lock. The unencumbered fund balance is the part of your fund balance that is money sitting there doing nothing, and yet it magically grows every year. You don't budget for it to grow, and yet the trend line over time is that it grows. Why does it grow? Because there's portions within the budget that are padded, that are bigger than they need to be. If we just know what that is and get a better grip on it, we can capture it in real time. The magistrate told you that other districts are doing this better than us, and that money is there as evidenced on the backside. I'm going to jump to the back right quick, because I want to show you the evidence. Misty, you were hitting all around this at the meeting, I was proud of you, but we didn't quite bring it home. Look at the box where I put question marks underneath those numbers, all right? Notice every year, the average raise is much bigger than the change in average salary. What that means is you budget to give that much in raise, and yet the salary doesn't go up, so there's a gap in there somewhere. Let's explain some of that gap. Oh, man, I'm running out of time. The first is the lapse factor. This was a past CFO admitted. She said the average contract is 98.8% fulfillment, this because not everybody works the full contract. $5 million was captured. The attrition money is what's called the Dan Bennett money, means year over year, the average teacher comes in is about $3,500 less, that's the number Penny gave, I agree. That saves you about $285 in average salary. But there's more to it. Just look at those two numbers, look at the gap. Oh, I'd love 30 more seconds. Can I get 30 more seconds? I just want to give you a few ideas. Please, 30, 30.
Board, will we give Mr. Bennett 30 more seconds?
30 more seconds.
29.
Ms. Belford gives you 29.
These are what other districts have looked at, and other districts have agreed and admitted and said, oh, yes, we can do this. Vacant positions, don't make the union fight for this. Every four days you have a teacher vacancy, or excuse me, every four days that you have 50 vacancies, that's one teacher's salary. It's real. Other boards have learned this, agree it, capture that money, put it in, this district still fights about it. You have positions in your budget that are not advertised. Dr. Mullins, you wisely said that if we had a catastrophe, had to cut money, we'd cut positions. There are positions not advertised that are in the budget. Those people don't collect raises. I'll leave you with a question. Suppose you just advocated, or just approved $9 million in recurring raises for next year. I mean, suppose that's just a package that you did. How much do you have to have in your budget for next year to cover those $9 million raises for next year? Did you say 9 million? It's not. It's less than 8.5 million, because 10% of your people, 8% to 10% of your people, quit on you every year. So those people that leave, they don't get the raise next year. There's ways that you can capture that money ahead of time, and then your average raise will actually, or your average salary will actually go up as much as your average raise. When you get those two numbers to balance, we will be right on level with other districts in our area that have already learned this lesson. You can do it, I'm confident, because other districts have done it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 2019-2020 tentative budget? Board members, any more questions or comments on the tentative budget? The public comment portion of this hearing is now closed. This brings us to the recommendations for the adoption of the proposed millage rates and tentative budget. Dr. Mullins?
There are a total of three separate motions for the board to consider. I will read each of these recommendations into the record and request board action. Item A, adopt proposed 2019-2020 millage rates of operating fund. Required local effort, 3.838. Local discretionary, 0.748. Capital outlay, 1.500. For a total, 6.086.
What are the wishes, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote.
It hasn't come up yet.
Pam's working on it.
Okay.
Item B, adopt the 2019-20 tentative budget of operating, 633,907,522. Special revenue, 97,291,35. Debt service, 41,402,583. Capital outlay, 254,423,721. I'm going to go back.
Which one?
Let me repeat debt service. Capital outlay, 254,423,721. For a subtotal, 1 billion, 31 million, 720.
Excuse me, Dr. Mullins?
Enterprise was read at 4,700,823, and it should be 826, according to the agenda.
I apologize.
I just want to make sure we got it right, so we don't have anything messed up.
I said 3?
Yes, you did.
No idea where that came from. Let me try again. Subtotal, 1 billion, 31 million, 725,689. For a total, 976,950,931. Internal service, 81,798,819.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. McDougal. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item C, authorize the superintendent to take the following actions. One, notify both the property appraiser and the tax collector of the proposed 2019-2020 millage and the following rolled back rates. Operating fund rolled back rates. Required local effort, 3.8452. Local discretionary, 0.7100. Capital outlay rolled back rate, 1.4238. Total rolled back rate, 5.9790. Number two, notify both the property appraiser and the tax collector of the final public hearing on September 10, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Educational Services Facility, Viera. And three, adjust the revenues and expenditures, if necessary, prior to the final public hearing.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. The proposed 2019-2020 millage rate necessary to fund the tentative budget exceeds the rolled back rate by 1.79%. Budget hearing is now adjourned, and we will reopen the board, the school board meeting. We will move on to, oh, Dr. Mullins, not sure, sorry.
We're moving on to the action agenda. We will move on to item G23 and purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item G24 is on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McDougal, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
There is one item under the information category. Am I in the right spot?
You are, but we will move to, on to now to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a later meeting. Now action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins?
There is one item under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss this item?
Can I say hello?
Ms. McDougal.
I first want to thank Ms. Moore's team for putting the, this plan together. I spent a lot of time on the phone with her yesterday, and I appreciate her taking the time. I think it's a great start, and I look forward to the, our plan, and I probably will be asking her more questions, but I'm excited that you have put this together, so thank you. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you again.
Anyone else have any comments on our information item this evening, the BPS mental health plan? I just want to thank Ms. Moore and her team, and probably Dr. Thuddy, who was probably in the formative stages of that, and it's all, it's all Ms. Moore. It's, there's so much in that plan, there's so much good for our students that I want, I, you know, I think I emailed you the minute I saw it posted and clicked and opened it, and I'm pretty excited about what our district is doing for the mental health of our students. And I know we've got room to grow, but we've come a long way in the last few years, so thank you and your team for all your hard work. We are now on to board member discussion points and reports. Turns out, they're both mine. So that's not how I'm supposed to say it. According to Pam, I have to say, I placed two items for discussion for this evening. The first one is regarding Florida tax requests for special use of alcohol at Palm Bay Magnet High School, and the second one is options for a long-term compensation plan. We will start the discussion for Florida tax request of special use of alcohol at Palm Bay Magnet High School. Mr. Langdorff, I think we're probably going, I, no, I'm at least going to have some questions for you, if you can come up. So I asked for us to discuss this because Mr.
Jergens.
Jergens, sorry, your name escaped me, reached out to me earlier this week because the district had denied FIT the ability to not sell, but serve or bring alcohol on our Palm Bay campus. And for those that are watching, FIT leases our stadium at Palm Bay Magnet High School, it is actually called the Florida Panther Stadium, is that, do I have that correct? And they would like to do some tailgating, and so they wanted us to alter our school board policy, which says we cannot have alcohol on any campus, for the time and the duration that they are on the campus. I am told that your department denied, according, according to our school board policy, and I would like to hear, because I haven't called you or even discussed your reasons for denying, and then I'm hoping we can discuss it as a board, if it's something we want to consider to make an amendment to, like we have for the Space Coast property, or the, what's it called, Matt? The Space Coast Daily.
Viera Middle.
Space Coast Daily Park. Mr. Langdorff, I'm sorry, I probably should have prepared you. I didn't, I'm sorry I didn't tell you this was coming.
That's perfectly fine. I did.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins.
The, obviously, I've been doing, I looked at the calendar today, this is my 20th year and 25th day working for the school board of R. County as your risk manager.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Not looking for accolades on that, but the reality is, I've been over the facility use during that entire time. Part of the things, part of my duty is to make sure that anybody who's using your facilities is doing so according to policy. If you look at Board Policy 5530, under drug prevention, it says a couple of things that I think are pretty clear. It says, for the purpose of this policy, and I just highlighted these to shorten this up, for the purpose of this policy, drugs shall mean all alcoholic beverages, as part of our drug prevention. And then it's a two-part process when it comes to drugs. It says, the board prohibits the use, possession, concealment, or distribution of any drug or any drug-related paraphernalia as termed by, term is defined by law, or the misuse of a product containing a substance can be providing an intoxicating or mood-altering effect on school grounds, on school vehicles, and at any school-sponsored event. In addition, it says, it further establishes that a drug-free zone, there is a drug-free zone within 1,000 feet of any facility used by the district for educational purposes. Based on that, whenever we get a request for somebody to serve alcohol or have alcohol on campuses, we deny all of those requests. So FIT's request was no different than what we might have had from anybody else.
Mr. Susan, do you have questions? Do you have a question?
Just real quick, when did that request come in?
It came in last week. That's when I was aware of it.
Do we have any other type of arrangements that are similar to what we have with FIT as far as the contract, the stadium use? I know we rent out our cafeterias for meetings and things of that nature, but do we have anything else on that level?
We don't have the, on the same level as FIT, no. But we do rent out our facilities frequently to a lot of members of the public. We process over 7,000 facility use agreements a year, district-wide.
Are they under a facility use agreement, or are they under some other type of contract also?
They're mostly facility use agreements. There may be some that, an individual group that might be working for the Parks and Recreation Department.
No, FIT specifically, are they just under our traditional one-page facility use agreement?
Yes, they're under our facility use. Yes, they're under our facility use agreement.
Even with them naming the stadium and all, there's nothing overarching that's bigger than our facility use agreement with them?
Those are separate agreements. When it comes to facility use, it's always done through our facility use agreement form, and we charge them according to what we've charged initially. When I can't... I don't have those charges in front of me, or else I'd give those to you.
No, I don't need to know the amount. I'm more curious about how we've done this before. Do you remember when we... What we did to allow... I know it's different, the property. It doesn't have a school on it, et cetera, et cetera. But what did we do different to go against our own policy to allow Space Coast Park to serve and sell alcohol?
That is school board property. It is, but there is no school located. In addition to that, we had Brevard Productions install a six-foot fence between the Viera High School property and where they will be. So, it's not within a... It doesn't meet that qualification of 1,000 feet within an educational facility, and there's a six-foot fence separating those two properties. I think the board was looking to help Brevard Production do that, because it was something that they looked at as a public good for that particular area. And because it wasn't a school campus, I think that's... I can't speak for the board, but I think that's what the decision was as to allowing alcohol just on that particular property.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for Ms. Langdorff? Mr. Langdorff?
I did want to just touch base between the differences, because as soon as this came in, I started to deep diving, and one of the main drives was to put the Daily Park, which we were even talking about revenue just the other day. He's... I contacted Giles Malone and asked him, "How much has he improved that property?" He spent $625,000 to raise the base, put in an entrance, put up the fence around there, follow the policies and stuff like that. That's roughly what he put into the property. And then I asked Mark, I said, "How is it that we can do alcohol out there, but then how does that not fit into the stadium and everything else?" And he said that the 1,000-foot barrier is what allowed it to happen. So, I said, "Okay, so that's our policy." So, I said, "Well, is there a state policy that we can... If we can just amend this one, is there a state policy?" And I looked up, and I did, I found 562... 562.45 penalized penalties for violating beverage law timeline. And I pulled it up, and it says, "A location on..." However, except for premises licensed on or after, and except for locations that are licensed at restaurants, which drive 51%. It says, "A location on premises consumption of alcoholic beverages may not be located within 500 feet of the real property that comprises a public or private elementary school, middle school, or secondary school unless the county or municipality approves the location as promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community under the proceedings provided in subsection 125.664." I went those, and the guidelines that we are trying to make this happen under don't meet that. So, what I was going to recommend is, I was trying to figure out a way to get this to happen, but at the same time, everywhere I went, I hit another wall, hit another wall, hit another wall. So, I think if there was a way that we could ask staff to see if there's a way to make this happen and make a recommendation to bring it back to us, because there's some other concerns that I had, which were, if we have alcoholic consumption going on on campus on a Saturday, or... But we also have SATs, or we actually have all of our clubs, or what are we doing there? You know what I mean? I think I was... I really wish this would have came in earlier, so we could have vetted all of those things.
Mr. Susan, I do want to address that one, because I've spoken to the school and to the principal, and he said that they purposely, even now, do not schedule anything at the school on game days for FIT. And not only that, they don't even usually schedule anything the night before. Like, they try to put all their home games completely opposite weekends, because they set up on Friday nights before the Saturday games. So, I just want to make sure we're all... Is that... So, that's state statute that you just read?
Yeah, yeah. And I... And there's... I tried... I tried that, and then there was just a couple of other concerns that I had that were with the difference between the two. Is there a fence that we can say, just to try to say similarity between the two were there? And I just... I kept hitting roadblocks. So, instead of coming up with a last-minute, "Yeah, let's make this happen," I think it would be our due diligence to let staff take a look at it, workshop it, and come back to us with something if that was possible. Because I didn't... I do want to promote working with our people, but I don't want to put us into a liability where we get hit. And then there was another thing, a federal funding thing that I hit, that was dealing with the national laws as far as alcoholic on school property. So, I just think it would just behoove us, rather than jumping into something, we would do that anyway, is to just tell staff, "Hey, can we make this work, and what is it that's going to be our barriers?" Rather than jumping into it. And they don't have a game until September 28th, so I don't know if that plays into...
Gives us a little time. So, I agree with Mr. Susan, that I would like to see this work if we can. We can't violate state law, obviously. We can work within our own policies if we choose to, but we need feedback from the other three, because it would take three of us to even move forward to have staff try to figure something out, if possible. I mean, maybe there's not, but is there anyone else that has any interest in looking more into this for FIT?
I understand the desire of our... Yeah, the school, of our city council from Melbourne, who has contacted us, and the Chamber of Commerce, who has contacted us, but I, for one, am not interested at all in allowing alcohol consumption on any of our campuses, ever.
Can I... I'd like to say something, too.
Ms. McDougal?
At the moment, I understand in FIT, you have your tailgating on your campus, and then you... Everybody kind of goes over to our stadium. Is there a reason why that can't continue? I mean, I read some articles, thank you very much, Ms. Campbell, that it talked about that one of the main reasons that people want to do this, schools want to do this, is because it's a fundraiser. It brings in more money. It helps the programs. I get that. But also, I am very leery of having alcohol on any of our campuses also, for many reasons. There's some statistics that was written by university... Somebody, a doctor... Let me see what his name was. President... Oh, boy. Naitez, N-I-E-T-Z-E-L. He wrote an article in 2018, and talking about how more and more colleges are wanting to serve alcohol, but at the same time, they talk about more than 1/3 college students report binge drinking, that 20% of the college students could be diagnosed with alcohol disorder. And if people know who I am, I'm a social worker, so this is why I'm quoting all these facts here, a fourth of college students report that they have adverse effects with drinking. And the statistic, alcohol tends to be a factor in the cases for sexual assaults. More than 1,800 college students die annually from alcohol-related deaths. I really do not want to have any alcohol on our campuses either.
Ms. Belford, sounds like you're going to make the deciding decision if we move forward with exploring this.
So, I am... You know, I think we should always look into things just to make sure that we understand all aspects of it. I am admittedly not a huge fan of having alcohol on our campuses. I think that the only way, barring state, national laws, that may stop us, and that may be a deal breaker, that may be exactly where the work stops and looking into it. Barring that, if there were a situation where our campus was effectively shut down to everything except for FIT being there, doing their tailgating, it's something that I could potentially consider. However, I will not vote to go against our own policy. So, it would require for me, in order for me to support it, it would require that we go through the process of altering our policy to provide some very slim, very restricted exception in order to make this happen. So, I'm not... You know, I get where they're coming from. I can understand, but at the same time, I won't vote to go against our policy. I suspect, based on having done the same research that Mr. Susan did, that we are going to run into obstacles that will keep us from doing that, unless there is some way for... Well, and I... Because of the proximity to the school, I don't see that there is... I was going to say, unless there's some way that we can actually, like, transfer partial ownership of the parcel or something. But that even if you look at the state statute with the 500-foot restriction, I don't think that would even achieve it, because we're still going to be within 500 feet on that campus. There's no way to get 500 feet away, so...
I even had Suhan look into see if we had any vacant property around that had joined Palm Bay, that we could try to allow the... You know, that piece, so they could just walk to the stadium.
Right.
And she said there wasn't. So, I was trying as hard as I could, I just kept hitting walls all the way.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm fine if you all would like to give direction to Ms. Enval to look into the statutory, you know, the statutory restrictions that... I would think that would be the best place to start, and just to verify that that is, you know, our biggest roadblock. If that's the case, I don't know that there's anything that we can do about it, and it shouldn't take an enormous amount of your time just to verify that, I hope.
I can take a look at that. I haven't had a chance to look at it, because it was so quick.
Right.
I did get a chance, however, to look at our policy, the 5530, and it has not been amended in a very long time, and it has a number of wonky provisions that need to be changed. But Neola's template is the exact same as our current policy is, save for an extra line at the end that doesn't... It is not applicable in this particular situation. You have another policy you also need to consider. You have a human resources policy... Hang on a second. 3124, which is drug-free workplace policy, and the Ministry of Procedures that specifically provides in the third section A, like I said, we still have to amend some of those, but in the third section A, it says, "Employees will be free of alcoholic or drug intoxication when on duty or on board property. Employees are prohibited from the manufacture or use of alcoholic beverages while on board property or while on duty with the board." So, the way that that language specifically states, it means that any employees would be in violation of our board policy if they choose... If, first of all, if you have alcohol on our property, and then if they choose to partake in the use of it.
So, it seems it would have to really be some kind of way. It wouldn't be our property for so many hours. It'd have to be some obscure way of making it work. If you're okay with them just looking at it, I mean, seeing if there's anything, Ms. Enval?
And I think with us moving forward with, just in general, it's a good exercise to look at. I'm sorry. I think moving forward, regardless of if it comes back state statute or whatever, we need to look forward to this, because we are opening up for advertising dollars and everything else. What could we capture if there was an event? And we do have Space Coast Daily Park that's over there that's operating, so what's the difference? What do we do? I see. That's... I was going to ask if we didn't get this thing through, to just do an exercise, just to see it, but I agree with you. I want to do due diligence. I don't want to throw something on staff, so let's give them the opportunity to bring it back to us.
Dr. Mullins, did you... Do you want me to restate what we're asking for?
Ms. Enval, are you...
I know, but he has to kind of know. It's our attorney, but she may be working with Mr. Langdorff and some others. I think we understand this is not likely, but if there's any avenues, we've asked Ms. Enval, obviously, to look and probably use some of your staff to get some resources together. The thing is, is we want to be a good partner. I think all five of us want to be good partners to FIT. I think two of our board members have legitimate concerns. We are, you know, we are under 18 schools. So, if we can just take a look, see if there's something we can do. If not, at least we need to look at that policy anyway for other future things. I think what Ms. Belford said is important. If we need to... Needed to alter our policy, it had to be done in a very specific way, because we don't want every single... That's why I was asking if they were under some different type of contract. We don't want everyone that comes up with the... What's that form? Facility use form? To check a box to say, "Yeah, we'll be serving alcohol at our local elementary school."
Because of precedent.
There are some concerns with precedent as well.
So...
I didn't even go there because of the district's...
There's enough in the policy to... Okay. We appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Langdorff. Mr. Jurgens, if... I'm not sure if you followed everything that was going on there. It's not shut down and closed, but there's going to be a lot of obstacles, is what it seems to look like. Okay? Thank you for your time and for coming out. All right, the next topic, board, that I wanted to discuss, and I know I just threw it on here last night, but yesterday, we met... The school board, one of our jobs is to do the superintendent's annual evaluation, and yesterday, we met to do that. And one of the things we do at the end of the evaluation is set five goals, and Dr. Mullins barely even knows what we've set for his five goals, because we haven't met him to give his... To give him his evaluation yet. But I think it's timely. It's timely with the budget hearing and with everything from... That's going on with teacher salary and us coming off of this meeting yesterday, that we had these discussions as a board, and as we set Dr. Mullins's goals for the next year, we have as the number-one goal, the exact wording is, "To adopt a plan to fix equity gaps and increase compensation," and that is equity gaps within compensation. So, his number-one goal that the school board has directed for the year is to increase compensation. Thank you.
Say it again, I want to hear them clap again.
Yeah, I know. We don't get that from that table very often. We'll take that. And as I went home and thought about that some more, and what that's really going to take, it's going to take, in my mind, like, a big, bold plan, and it's going to hurt somewhere in our community. We've been throwing around a millage rate. Half of our... Roughly half of our community is not going to like that. It's going to harm some of maybe our elderly that are on a fixed income and have their home paid for. We've been throwing around the five of six, and there's... I really want us... And it's interesting that you brought that up today, because it's actually in my notes from last night, that I'm very interested in the district really digging in there again. Several of my schools, including Satellite High, those teachers are constantly asking to go back to five of six. Again, there's a downside. There's consequences to that, and our CTE programs would suffer. I believe our electives would suffer. For Satellite alone, some of their fine arts opportunities may suffer, but I think it's something we have to... It's time. Time is here. Something big has to happen. We're looking at tax increases, switching our whole system back to six-period days. And, you know, I tried to... I've tried to talk about this a couple times, and no one seems to want to hear me. We have 30 more schools, but 19 more elementary schools in Seminole County with the same amount of students. Ms. Dierker tells me it's approximately $1 million a year to operate that school. Outside of teacher salaries, it's just $1 million a year. That's $19 million. So, when we look at other counties and we say, "Why can't we pay ours?" Mr. Bennett, he's gone. "Why can't we pay ours what other counties are paying theirs?" Well, there's one reason. There's $19 million that we're using to operate 19 more schools. That needs to be a community discussion. Does our... Do we want to look at that as an option in our community? Can we really look at that? Well, it's time. It's time to look at that. Is it time to put a five-year plan in place, a 10-year plan in place to consolidate some of our schools, so those operating expenses are... We love our small community schools here. I love them. I love being in them. My... I get it, but we've got big problems, and it's time for some bold... And I say brave, because it's very hard to sit up here, because there's going to be a room of people screaming at us if we raise taxes, if we don't give teachers the proper raise, if we close schools, if we go to six-period days. There will be a roomful of somebody screaming at us. It's going to be hard decisions. And maybe there's some decisions out there, or some options out there I'm not even thinking of, but I think the time's here. And so, I feel like along with our making this Dr. Mullins number-one priority for the year, I want tonight to get support from you all, to ask him to bring us a plan. It's time. It's time for three or four major, hard options that we can bring out to the community, and we can debate and fight about and figure out what we want to do to get this district whole again, where we need to be. So, if I can get my fellow board members on board, we'll give Dr. Mullins marching orders, give him, you know, a few months probably to start pulling that together, whatever time he thinks he needs, and we can go forward.
There's... And thank you. Like, the main reason... One of the main reasons when I left, when I was teaching after nine years, was that I had people that worked right next door to me that were making $3,000 more than me. And that was before they took away step... The pay increases based upon steps and everything else. We... People were literally coming in, because we were on a frozen pay scale for so long, making more money than I was, and I was teaching seven of seven. I think not only do you look at five of six, not only do you look at the extra four credits I think not only do you look at five of six, not only do you look at the extra four credits that we have, that we have to graduate the high school students with, that's, that, that takes up. I think you also look at a slew of other options that we have, but yes, you're right. And what the bottom line is, is that we have to make a decision on what's best for the kid. And literally, every single piece of statistics that says who it is that, that has the biggest impact on achievement inside the schools is teachers. And if we're not, if we're not giving that the first look and the first priority, and we have all of these other options that are great for the kids, but the actual person that's inside the classroom isn't taken care of, and then we're not going to get the achievement we need, no matter how many options we have, no matter. And I am so hop, happy that this board made the decision to move forward and make this such a priority, and I, and I think it, and that was your answer, Anthony, as far as getting back to the five of six. Let's go there, let's go everywhere. And that, the board went for it yesterday. So you guys are amazing, and I applaud the effort, and go.
Just one second, Ms. Belford. The board has not gone with five of six yet.
No, I'm saying, look into it.
We've asked Dr. Mullins to look into it.
Did I say that?
You said, "Let's," the board agreed to that yesterday, is what you said. Let's go there.
Actually, I went for it.
We went for it.
Heart attacks, sorry.
We went for it.
Didn't mean to give everybody a heart attack. We haven't moved forward with it yet, but we definitely need to look at it. And, and not only that, but we need the real numbers. Because the last time we did it, it was kind of a, it was kind of a shade the way that it went, and we need to get the true core of what it, what it is, so.
And, and the pros and the cons of, of what it means, really laid out, and again, presented to all corners of this community, so that, you know, I really think we've done a poor job on educating what we're dealing with up here, and what our choices are, and let the community have input. This is their schools, this is their teachers, this is their kids, and let's, let's hear what they want. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I just wanted to clarify, and thank you for bringing that to the, to the forefront and sharing our, our conversation from yesterday. I just want to clarify for Dr. Mullins that what we are asking of you is to bring forward options, not to bring forward a solution, but to bring forward options, because our discussion yesterday really centered around the fact that this is a community issue that the community has to own, and the community has to support going forward, whatever decisions we make. And so the importance of having those options and educating our community about the impact of those options, pros and cons, so that they can join with us in giving feedback on the direction that they would like to see us go. And it really kind of dovetails with my conversation today with Ms. Hand regarding our capital needs, and making sure that we can explain to our community that we have, out of our, I don't know, 60, Jane's not here, is she?
Fifty.
Out of our 56 elementary schools, we have 38 that don't have a functional playground, and that's a, that's not a real number, that's a random number I'm throwing out there. We have to, we have to study that and, and pull that information together and know exactly how many schools that we have that need playgrounds, how many parking lots we have that are not safe that we don't have funding to fix, how many black tops or green tops do we have rusting, basketball hoops on at our elementary schools that we don't have the funds to, to address, because we simply don't allocate funding in those areas from our capital dollars, in addition to our operating dollar challenges. But I, I feel like putting all of that together and really educating our community and saying, "Here's our challenge, and we want world-class education in Brevard County. How do we get there as a community?" is really, really important. So those, those options would be fabulous.
And with those options, once we do the community tour and get input, that's, I feel like that, and I titled this tonight, "Long-term," what do I call it? Options for long-term, I have to click on it, it's a long, compensation plan.
You're talking about long-term care.
Cheryl, Cheryl did ask me when she got here, "Are you talking about long-term care? Oh, my gosh, that's so expensive." No, long-term compensation plan. So we'll take, we'll take what we, all that feedback, we'll do one of your big old spreadsheets, and we'll figure out what to do, and we'll put, this year-to-year stuff is killing me. I can't, I can't do this again with you all. It's painful for, for me, too. Like, I, I want to know what they're getting next year. We can't depend on the state, apparently, and so, and, you know, and I just want to say something about that, too. I don't want to slam the state and throw it under. Dr. Mullins and I have had this conversation, and I, you know, I went back to the state constitution. "It is therefore a paramount duty of the state to make adequate provision for the education of all children residing within its borders." Does adequate education mean they have to pay for football stadiums and top fine art programs? I think probably not. I think the state gives us enough funds for reading, writing, arithmetic. And if we want more here in Brevard, we are going to have to do something different to bring it here. And I, I think that's the message the state has been sending, where, you know, they keep saying, "No, we're funding it, we're funding it." And, you know, they are, they're funding the basics, but we want more here in Brevard. I'm pretty sure of that. I'm pretty sure it's, that's the message throughout, and I think that's what we're going to hear from our community. Anybody else?
No. I agree with you.
The only thing I wanted to add, and this may be getting too specific, but one of the things that I'd like to see as we move forward, and hopefully I can sit down with Anthony and Vanessa soon, that I, because I want to, need their help in some research, is changing our, our new higher salaries schedule. And we have to work on, how do we do that without leapfrogging over the people who've been here, but I think when, it's time to make that move as well. So, and that's, I'm, I'm working on it myself. I've got a little Excel spreadsheet project going on, but I'd like to see that included as part of our, our move.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Dr. Mullins, do you want to say anything to any of that, or?
Well, I, I just want to say, thank you to the board for wanting to tackle the challenge together, and I'm up for the challenge, and we will, we will begin dialogue. I look forward to one-on-one conversations with you as, as we develop that, and I'll certainly be working with staff to bring, put together a, a task force and tackle that, and we'll discuss some timelines and deliverables and so on. So absolutely appreciate the support, and ready to get to work.
Thank you, sir. With all that, our meeting is adjourned.